I am calling this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, as you're ready, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
De Peña.
He's in Texas.
Graziano.
Here.
No Parry.
Absent.
Texas.
Ravel.
Here.
Stromler Burke.
Here.
And Mayor Melham.
Here. Pledge allegiance.
They moved him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sunshine. Can we hear? Do we have Councilman De Peña on the line?
Yes, we do.
Yep, we can hear you.
She was over here. She's over here. Guess that was not fixed.
That little bomber was fixed. Honest. Yes. We never made a decision what we wanted to do.
We want to fix it. We want the council line to be overhead, like it always was, and we want the public line to be here. But when we dial into the council line over there, it appears over there.
And that was totally-
Same story for the last six months.
And that was totally separate because every-
But now, this is okay. Naomi, can you say something?
Yes, testing, testing.
Yeah, okay.
No, it's, that's why-
Sunshine.
You can't have two different-
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22, 2022, additions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting it forward into the press, posting a file with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Town Hall bulletin board, and it's also on the website.
Perfect. Next item on the agenda is a farmers' market presentation. I did get a text or an email that is in traffic. As long as he makes it by the end of the meeting, we'll try and fit him in. Next item on the agenda is the report of the manager.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving. Just a couple of quick just notices. We're going to send out a townwide notice and post it on the website, but street sweeping will probably come to an end at the end of next week. So we'll be advertising that. We received bids last week for Plans on Park. I anticipate a resolution on it at the next meeting. Again, this is one of our bigger projects that we're looking forward to. Great section of town, an all-inclusive playground, which is much needed, and some other improvements, like a dog park, things of that nature. Also, next meeting, we'll start awarding some of the RFPs that have come in for the 12-12. And the only other item I do want to bring to the council's attention is that representatives from IMAC, our insurance broker, probably will have to come to the next meeting to discuss a potential emergency appropriation. Our, our claims for the last six months have really, really went extremely high, and-
Just so we can mentally prepare, the emergency appropriations in the ballpark of how much?
$2 million. No, this is medical. And they're going to give us a complete breakdown. And again, when you're self-insured, sometimes it certainly works into your favor. Don't quote me on it, but last year, we came in close to, I thought, about $1 million on the budget. In this case, this year, it was the year before this year. It looks like it's going to be $2 million over. So IMAC will be here so we can go over it. We had several meetings so far with our finance team, and we'll have a plan in place by next meeting. And that would be it. Certainly open to questions.
Any questions for the manager?
If it's for you or for Mark. Did we have some sort of spill over here on Belleville today? Because I saw a whole bunch of sand and stuff. I just thought we initially went and DPW.
Any other questions for the manager? Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So past events, we had a very good Halloween event on October 28. Very good, very well attended. Weather was absolutely perfect, a lot of happy children, a lot of happy parents, just a good event. I think people are really getting used to the quality of the events that we put on. Speaking of quality events, the Veterans 10K Run was another success. We became very close to reaching our all-time highs as far as participation is concerned. Vinny, you came in second out of, no, third out of mayor and council. Just want to, I did receive a gold medal for my first place out of all mayors that were attending. After that, we had the Veterans Day Parade. Want to thank the manager's staff, Jeannie, who jumps in and does the Veterans Day Parade, another great event. It was a big Veterans Day. The vets were happy, that's what matters most. It was a very successful event. And again, I think we had more people at the end of that parade than we've had in recent years. Last Friday, I joined the high school of seniors and juniors at the municipal stadium complex. I was fortunate enough to be able to intervene and have a little bit of a say in allowing Project Graduation to utilize the field. And I wanted to be there. I was asked to perform the opening coin toss. It was a good event to raise some funds for Project Graduation. Their target goal is $50,000, I'm told. Yesterday, we had a, I'm sorry, Sunday, we had a turkey distribution event. I want to thank everybody, all the volunteers that came out to assist in that. We handed out north of 150 turkeys, which was the most we've ever handed out. Upcoming events, I believe it's this coming Wednesday, November 29, 12:30, Belleville Police Department will be hosting a free bingo event at the Senior Center. I will be there as well, so looking forward to that this coming Wednesday. And today, on social media and our website, we finally launched the date in the flyer for our upcoming Christmas tree lighting and winter festival. It's going to be very good. It's going to be on Saturday, December 9. We gather from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Tree lighting is at 8:00 p.m. sharp. All the usual events and services and fun stuff that we do for the kids will be there. That is going to be on Tuesday, I'm sorry, Saturday, November 9, December 9. Some news, Spring 2024. I spoke with our county executive, Joe D., last week at the League of Municipalities. He's very excited at the fact that Belleville Park, one of the branch book parks, parks, will be getting a total facelift. Turf, all that great stuff. It's one of the last county parks to get that facelift, and I've been bugging them since 2018 for this. I also do bug them for summer concert series. This past summer was the first time we ever received a summer concert. Next summer, that summer concert that Belleville gets will be on a brand-new turf synthetic field, lower-level and upper-level soccer field and two baseball, softball fields above. The municipal green team was once again recognized as a bronze-certified community through the Sustainable New Jersey Program. I was on hand to receive that award. We took some pictures at the League of Municipalities. Another great get for our green team. They do some good work. Gabby, Ms. Gabby Bennett-Mini, who leans that, also spoke at the conference. I attended that. It was a very, very nice presentation about the safe streets to schools, about the intersection that we all collaborated with. Was a very good presentation. Registration is now open for our winter programs, 2023 through 2024. Sign up for basketball, cheer clinics, and junior bucks wrestling. That's it for me. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, regular meeting from October 24, 2023. Need a motion?
Second.
Have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Peña. Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
And Mayor Melham.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. The clerk's office has received a letter from the New Jersey Transit that they will be having an information hearing on December 6, 2023, for the Senior Citizen and Disabled Resident Transportation Assistant Program, with three different sessions starting at 5:00 p.m. for the southern region, Session 2 at 6:00 p.m. for the central region, and 7:00 p.m. for the northern region. Bids were received on November 14, 2023, for the third occasion for the Plans on Park improvements, Phase 1. And the RFQs and RFPs results are in your packet, and they're ready to be awarded.
Are we going to award the next council?
Are we going to award the next council meeting for Plans on Park?
That was, yes, that was included in my management. Along with the RFPs for the 12s.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is ordinances. Ordinance 40-23, ordinance for possible adoption. Adoption of the Flood Plan Management Regulations of the Township of Belleville and ordinance by the council of the township of Belleville, amending Belleville Township Code of ordinances to repeal Chapter 22, Sections 22-1 through 22-5, and to adopt a new Chapter 22, Sections 101 through 1,001, to adopt flood hazard maps and designate a floodplain administrator and providing for severability and effective date. Need a motion to open for public commenting. Motion made and second, open for public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
No Parry. Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
And Mayor Melham.
Yes. We are now open for public commenting, and public commenting only on this particular ordinance. Frant Antoni, just make sure that microphone is on.
Good evening. In reference to this, are these flood maps going to be redrawn? Is that what this is all about?
I don't see our engineer here. Mr. Manager, might you know? I'm assuming it was amended.
Tom Harris gave you this. I saw the email.
Yeah.
Tom gave it to Albert and said, the email said-
I think in general, if I'm not mistaken, it was all about, he had the incorrect date on the ordinance, and it needed the amendment.
Well, anyway, the point I want to bring up is that a friend of mine went up. We did a lot of work in Hurricane Sandy, and then two years ago with Hurricane, I was all over the town with a friend of mine. I have a ton of pictures. There are areas in town that are not on the floodplain map. I had the map with me. For example, Rutgers and Main Street, that corner lot, which is now being built on. My friend lived next door. He recently died. But that, under Ida, we were down there, held my friend, there was two feet of water, that lot, and it was not on the floodplain map. The other thing, I used to own a house on Bayard Street, near Cortland. The floodplain map only shows half a block up was the floodplain. But now, the person on board, I know, it was all the way up, almost toward Cortland Street. The other thing that don't show much on the floodplain map is by the Dollar Tree on Washington and Mill Street. There were cars, three cars actually floated up and were thrown up against a tree by the river, and that don't show up on the map. So is just this some technical thing, or are we going to actually do something about it to really reflect where the floodplains are to count?
Mr. Antoni, as you know, the township has nothing to do with what those flood maps show. It's completely and entirely federal. So you can go to the federal government to talk to them about it, but township has nothing to do with the regulations. This ordinance, the sole purpose of this ordinance is so we comply with the federal regulations because we were part of their program back in 1979. The council agreed to participate in the flood management program and the federal regulations. And for us to require, we're required to pass this program to comply with both the federal regulations and the New Jersey DEP. But where, what's designated a flood area and what isn't designated a flood area, not only do we have no input on it, we can't influence it all. So we can't do anything. We got to, you know, so this is, the purpose of this ordinance is to comply with both the federal regulations, because we were part of that program, and the New Jersey DEP and the requirements that they put in, in place.
Okay, so what you're telling me, when the citizen brings you up some information, you don't feel it's your obligation to pass this information to the proper authorities who you just delineated, who are responsible for it? Look, a citizen came and told us these areas. Can you inspect that? I mean, that's your job as a city council.
The citizens should go to the federal government, and they should provide to it. We don't control it, so it's-
I'm not asking you to control it.
Why go through a middleman? Why, just like you come here to complain about what these individuals up here do, that person needs to go to the federal government and provide whatever information they have. You're going an extra step that's unnecessary. That's not our, that's not the role that this mayor and council plays.
I'm only a citizen. And believe me, I called, in fact, this week, there's two agencies I called, one on the state level and one on the federal level. But I'm only a citizen. When something of this magnitude comes from a governing body of a township, they then, it's official.
Thank you, Mr. Frant Antoni.
They then take the-
If you want, if you want to write me a letter, Mr. Frant Antoni, I will forward it to the federal representatives to handle it.
You got you.
Isn't that exactly what you want?
No, I want you to, but you now have this on tape.
No, I'm not going to, I don't have it on tape. You write me a letter, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Bring this information to the proper authorities.
What you're saying is complete hearsay. So we don't even know what you're saying is actually-
On hearsay, I got pictures.
Whoever-
Put it in writing, Mr. Frant Antoni. I'll forward it to our congressperson. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only?
Great counsel, really.
Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none. Entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved.
We have a motion, a motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance 40-23 is adopted.
Ordinance 41-23, ordinance for possible adoption and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, New Jersey, Handicap Parking Chapter 8-16. Need a motion to open for public commenting.
Second.
We have a motion made and second, open for public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. We are open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance 41-23 is adopted.
Ordinance 42-23, an ordinance for possible adoption and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, New Jersey, Chapter 8-16 entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. Can't these be like one ordinance to amend it twice?
I'm glad you said that, Mayor, yes.
Okay.
They come at all times, and I don't understand why they-
No, but can't you get two of them and then put one ordinance on?
The problem is that one was introduced at one time, the other one was introduced at another time.
Okay.
And-
That makes sense. Okay. That's a good question, a good question and a good answer. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to fly for Handicap-
Yes, please. Motion to open public commenting. Motion made and second, open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. We are open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. Entertaining motion to close, move for final adoption.
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance 42-23 is adopted.
Before we move on to ordinances for introduction, just want to make sure there's nobody on the phones that had any questions for those particular public commenting. No one's on the phone. Okay. All right, moving on. Ordinance 43-23, an ordinance for introduction and ordinance amending the title Section 3A and Section 6B of Bond Ordinance 27-23 of the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, finally adopted on September 12, 2023, be ordained by the Township Council of Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, as follows. Section 1, the title of Bond Ordinance 27-23 of the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, the township, finally adopted on September 12, 2023. Bond Ordinance 27-23 is hereby amended to read as follows. Bond Ordinance providing for water main, valve, and lead service line replacement in and by the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $650,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $352,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Need a motion to introduce?
I'll move, second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance 43-23 is introduced.
Okay. We are now, I need a motion to open public comment. We have a motion made and second to open for public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Peña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Ravel.
Yes.
Stromler Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. We are now open for public commenting. Sir, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to hopefully speak on what we all believe is township business.
30 seconds.
Perfect.
Mario Drawes, 95 Bell Street. Just in regards to this street cleaning, I think I asked this question in the past. I was just hoping that we can, you can extend that for one simple reason, till at least it snows or the leaves are done falling. Because I know on my block alone, there are people that are so lazy. They'll blow the leaves out after the sweep, after the deadline is done, and they don't get picked up till the, till at least March or April. So I was just hoping, like, I go to a lot of Hudson County. Hudson County is so congested, but they still keep it till it snows. I'm hoping we could at least extend it a few weeks beyond that.
I think that's the reason why we don't have an ordinance with a hard date. It's up to the manager, and I guess-
No, that's why I'm bringing it up, so maybe-
They just pick it when they're ready to go.
We go by the, once it's under 32 degrees consistently.
Because then the water from the street, street tuber can't freeze.
But I, but I had done, that's a good question. But how about, how do these other towns do it? If they do it most, even in the wintertime, I see them doing it.
I don't know.
I've seen it, they dry, they do it dry, but then it just basically throws the dust-
But no, but you know, my, I know what you're saying. But my concern is because it's disgusting. I mean, I see people after this, they throw all the leaves out there because they don't pick them up. Unlike me, I pick, I go on the street, I blow them, I pick them up. So I hate a dirty street. And I'm going to see it down my block again, the same people over and over, and it's going to be there till March. So I was just hoping you could at least maybe extend it a few weeks beyond that.
Up to the manager.
Of course, I just wanted to give you my comments.
Anybody else for public commenting? Sir, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Again, it's almost like what I asked before. Resolution K and L, you, number 3 and number 7 terrace plates. You're going to advertise these for sale, a public sale?
Yes.
All right. These are definitely in a flood area. There's a famous Belleville Times picture of, right in front of them, a police vehicle totally buried with a policeman sitting on the roof. Is this going to be, when you advertise, are you going to advise the people that this is in a flood zone?
Are you trying to make them worth less for some reason? So the town gets less money? I don't understand the question. Why would we advertise that? That's their due diligence. We got an appraisal, the appraiser appraised it. The minimum value is in there for the bid. If somebody wants to build and bid a million dollars for the lot and didn't do their due diligence because it's in a flood zone, that's their problem. Why, why? I don't understand.
No.
Are you trying to reduce the value of the property for some reason?
No, I'm trying to save the taxpayers' money because there's been circumstances where people, people bought things and then they were, later, they sued because they weren't told. There were certain aspects of-
Do you have the name of that case? I'll check it out. Where they sued? Were they sued?
Come on, yeah, I can go.
Well, because Mr. Frant Antoni.
But it's not in a flood zone. Because you do that, it's actually not.
You say things, okay, so people can hear them. And we had the same conversation the last week. You just blur things out. And I'm an attorney and I like to follow things up. So if that's true, I'd like to follow it up so that I can confirm that with these people up here. Because you can't just say stuff and, and expect people just to believe what you say. So from now on, when you blur things out, I'm going to ask you to provide remit proof so that the people up here are not affected by it. So if you say that somebody sued because the town did something, like not tell them it was in a flood zone, I'd like to know who that was.
Well, the manager said that's not in a flood zone, but I think everybody knows.
Started your comments out by saying that this is an example of a, of a property that floods that's not listed on the flood map.
No, I didn't, not this property. I didn't say that.
I misheard you that. I thought that's what you started your commenting on.
No, this, these properties are definitely in flood zone.
Well, that's.
Absolutely, definitely.
Due diligence.
All the way up past Cortland.
The mortgage company is going to require them to have insurance for that. All that is well taken care, Mr. Frant Antoni, I'm sure. You don't have to worry about the people that are going to buy that property.
I'm, I'm just worried the taxpayer that we don't get sued for not.
I, I don't believe that's the case, but.
Advising of all the aspects of this property is for sale.
Your concern is noted. Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Hearing none, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to.
Oh, you want to ask if there's anybody on?
Is there anybody on the phone? No. Motion to close public commenting. Motion made and second to close public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Stromler Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, so before we go to resolutions, I'm going to flip right back to the beginning of the meeting. Item number five, we did have a presentation that was scheduled and a fine gentleman was stuck in traffic getting here because of the rain, I'm sure. So I'm going to have you come forward. As, as you know, sir, this is not normally our caucus meeting, which we give people about five to 10 minutes, so you have about five to 10 minutes. Just to give a high level overview of a potential green, potential farmer's market.
Yeah.
Company. So I received an email, I immediately forwarded that email to our green people, whether that was Gabby and/or Chris or both. They had some correspondence with you. They then brought some more information to me and my immediate reaction was, it's got to come before the council for a quick presentation before we could discuss anything amongst ourselves. So five minutes or so, if you.
That should be fine. My name's Howard, sorry, I get it. My name is Howard Rosenblatt. I'm the owner of Megabyte Events. Dorothy took longer to get Oz, the traffic coming from Somerset here today. But I met with Chris about a month and a half ago. We, my company, in addition to doing food festivals, we produce and put on farmer's markets throughout the state. We've done them in Parsippany with the town, we're doing it in Bridgewater next year with the town, and most recently, we did it last year in Paramus with Garden State Plaza. I've left that relationship and looking for a new home for a Sunday farmer's market that was at Garden State Plaza. When I brought the information up to the mayor and reached out and Chris, we went out and took a look at the site where I think you guys do your food truck festival outside by the softball field in the McAdam area. And we would love to be able to do a Sunday farmer's market to go right up against Nutley and give the town of Belleville something they can be proud of, something they can have some community spirit behind and do something very different than what Nutley does. My company will create and go out and secure all the vendors, all the farmers, the food trucks, manage the event itself, do the macro advertising through social media, paid and organic, our database is about 8, 10,000 people doing the email blasts, so forth and so on. We would ask the town to help us with the micro advertising and marketing. Vinyl signs, anything hung over the, over the street to promote when the farmer's market would be, which would be June through at least the end of October, 22 weeks. It can extend into, probably the second week in November would be the latest I would go. Some people don't like going outside to go shopping at that point. Some people look forward to it after dealing with the heat and humidity that July and August brings. So my company will do all the heavy lifting for you. All we need to do is have, we do have a fee that we charge, $15,000 for the entire year. And that covers my labor, covers all the advertising costs that we would have and additional signage that we would create. And at the end of the day, we want to do, and to make this different than what Nutley has and kind of what you may have tried in the year, in the years past after talking to Chris, is make it a community gathering spot, not just someplace to buy pickles and bread and some radishes. You have to do more than that. Get the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, the cheerleading squads, the dance squads, to come out and do recitals, presentations, soapbox derbies, do a .05K, just something fun, to get people to come out to that area so they can experience it. It takes about three years to build a market to have a reputation where people come out. It takes about 10 weeks to get regular customers. So if you start this the first weekend in June, by the middle of July, beginning of August, we'll start seeing familiar faces. And we want to provide the live music, bring a bounce house, create a small mini festival every Sunday or a street fair mentality every Sunday so that people can come and go, wow, this is pretty cool, the Belleville's doing this. And you start pulling people in from Nutley, like, wow, this is unique and different. You're still offering the same products, you're still offering unique items from a craft vendor standpoint. I try to limit that to kind of hit a specific type of craft vendor. I don't want to make it flea market-y. And the deal I have with Paramus and with Bridgewater is if you have a local business or someone who lives in town that owns a business, they're going to be part of the market. We do charge a vendor fee because that money goes towards the advertising, but we're going to have them involved in. So there's some people that the town, the mayor is in, in Parsippany was like, oh, we have to have this guy. Okay, not a problem. It's your, it's your, I'm doing it for you. I'm doing all the heavy lifting, all the marketing for it. And I would love to build something here in Belleville.
So I think as you are probably aware from talking to either Chris or Gabby, we did attempt this a couple of years back. Had a couple of them, they were okay, not well attended, but as you say, it takes time to build up. This past year, we didn't do one, or didn't continue it, I should say. So you say 22 weeks, June through July, on Sundays.
June through, June through the end of October.
October. Approximately how many vendors and are they farmer, like our, our farmer's market was people selling insurance?
Right.
Was, was not farmer's market-ish.
No, no, I get that. So yeah, it's kind of hard to do that, yeah. Hi, want to buy some lettuce? No, buy some insurance first.
We didn't have the lettuce.
No, no.
We had the lettuce and insurance was there, fine, but we didn't have the lettuce.
No, I got the lettuce. We would start with about 15 or 18 vendors on average.
But quantify those vendors. What are they selling?
Well, I have notes.
I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it, but are they?
No, it's okay. All right, let me get my notes here. Other than, I, I have one farm already theoretically in, if it happens. Meat and poultry farms, fresh food bean, pickles, dried nuts, kettle corn, hummus, lemonade, pre-made frozen meals, baked goods, beverages. We can serve alcohol by, as a packaged good extension, so we can serve local brewery or distilled spirits. Pet vendors, personal care, hot sauce condiments. Then you fall into the interactive, the data capture, and then we'll have food trucks there as well, whether they're serving breakfast food and/or lunch or so forth and so on. So we kind of create that 15 to 20. When I started Parsippany this year, we had 15, we ended up with 35 vendors on a weekly basis.
And the average cost to participate?
To a vendor is $50 a week.
And do you have to book the whole 22 weeks or can I just try it once?
No, you got to, you got to book at least, if you book 11 weeks, I give you a price discount. You have to book at least six. It's all about consistency.
That's right.
You have to do that. I, I've done it enough years now where I want to try it for a couple of weeks. And when I worked in advertising for years, you do something or you don't do it.
Right, thank you.
You don't try it. The hours would be, in my, in my personal, would be 10 to 2, 10 AM to 2 PM. We can go 9 to 2. 3 o'clock on Sundays is too late. At that point, people are already on to their next project. 9 o'clock to 2 o'clock is kind of standard, but it's okay if you do it from 10 to 2.
What days does Nutley have? Are they doing Saturday?